Get back and I'm walking and I go where I see her at. I'm in here. I'm like, great. So I keep going. And I get back to.
There's.
A lot of talks about our meeting to order. We'll start with the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, um. Administrations, I think we're probably good on that. Um. You want to make a change, Nathan, moving forward on the agenda, that it will be Robert, but that will be. Your responsibility for a little bit. And now we could do introductions. Guy, how about you start?
Yeah, your street utility superintendent. Brent Slusser, ninety-five, Penner Drive, member at large.
George Schenkel, one forty-four, West Clear Lake, uh, Ward One, council member.
Molly Weber, eight twenty-two, South Clear Lake Drive, member at large.
Bert Elliott, ten fifty-eight, South Clear Lake Drive, slide three, also member.
Chris Hammer, Tom Marshall.
Nathan Striker, Crook Treasurer, seven, we saw.
Great, thank you. And Dan is unable to be with us tonight. His mother is celebrating a big birthday, so. He chose family over council, maybe, and I can't imagine, Guy. Uh, we'll move forward with the approval of the agenda. If I can have a motion.
I move that we accept the agenda. Can I just present it?
Thank you, George. A second?
For about a second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. I move forward with the agenda as posted. All right, so we'll start with the minutes from our October fifteenth meeting. Have any of you pulled this out? Any corrections, changes? If not, if I could have a motion.
This is Brent. I will make a motion to accept the October fifteenth minutes.
Thank you, Brent. In a second?
Sure, a second.
You have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. And now we have minutes. Okay, guys, sorry about that, please. Um, now we'll move forward with the minutes from the November the sixth, our special session.
This is George. I move that we accept the, uh, October fifteenth minutes as presented.
Yep.
November sixth.
Yeah, on the agendas.
Oh, no, okay, I'm sorry.
No, it's.
I'm sorry. Six, as presented.
Thank you, George.
This is Brent, all second.
Thank you, Brent. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Nathan, what have we now do the voucher register work, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Uh, this voucher runs from October twenty-fourth through November eighteenth. Uh, there. Were three, no, there is two paid roll on this. We also have, um, a Lexi pole payment, um, on the fifth of November, you'll see that. We also have, I believe, our, um. Our insurance payment is also coming out, um, on the twentieth, December thousand eight sixty. We have our visa payments, ERIs on there, um. So on the general side of asking for a total of eighty-six thousand, one hundred forty and eighty-one cents. Uh, on the sewer side, uh, we have a lot of, um. Work that we've been doing over on the kind of lift station. And we also have, uh, some, uh, charges that have been coming through for, um. Oh, yeah, the trace pipe. So that was the big one that came through email. Um, so on the sewer side, I'm asking for a total of sixty-nine thousand, one hundred seventy-eight dollars and twelve cents. And the total for all funds for this voucher, I'm looking for approval for a hundred sixty-six thousand, one hundred seventy-two dollars and ninety-three cents. Any questions I can do with this now?
Just going on the feet, no water?
Yeah, I have a correct.
Thank you. And if you could move the voucher so the audience can see.
All right, still getting used to.
That's all right. Any questions for Nathan on the voucher? I'll entertain a motion to accept.
This is George. I move that we accept the, uh, present as presented.
Thank you, George. Second?
For about a second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you very much, Nathan. We will now move on to new business and we'll turn, um, this, uh, next item, the ARP appropriation resolution. Ten dash two zero two four over to Bert.
Yes, thank you. Um, I would like to submit. Um, for approval resolution ten dash twenty twenty-four, this is, uh, to appropriate the remaining. Uh, American Rescue Plan ARP grant funds, which have been received by the town. Um. We are required to fully appropriate them by the end of the year, so this needs that. Uh, the intent here is to, uh, apply this to the GIS mapping development that has been going on. Uh, you might recall, uh, that's been going on all year, the beginning part of that. There was a whole piece that did sewer, um, the, the storm sewer, the sanitary sewer, the street mapping, that sort of thing. This piece is really for the electrical part. Um, and if you're familiar with the way our system works, sometimes. The wire runs directly to the grinder, sometimes it runs from a neighbor's house. You don't know which neighbor, so it's really, this is really an important piece to kind of, to round out that whole picture, so, um. Uh, that's what this is for. I don't know, Molly, doing it, should I read this or how?
No, um, what we'll do is we'll entertain a motion to approve resolution ten dash two zero two four. Since it's a resolution, we just need a motion, a second, and a majority vote.
Any questions or anything? Very clear.
Uh, I could add a few things to this. Um, I just talked, uh, the other day to state more of accounts. Um, and so how this works, if you have to have all the money appropriated by the end of the year. Uh, has to all be spent by the end of twenty twenty-seven. Uh, and April next year is when I report on what we've spent the money and I. I submit all of our receipts for all the spendings that we made. So, um, I did, I had a training on it in October and then I just called to follow up to make sure I had everything straight, so, um. We may have to change the. Never mind. Everything, uh, yeah, is on track as long as we have it all appropriated by the end of the year, like Bert said, it should be fine.
So, um, it looks like we'll, so we'll do a motion, a second, and then this will be a little call vote.
Okay, I have, I have a question, Nathan. As we appropriated this year, how does that, it reflected in next year's accounting in the books? What do you mean? Well, if you, if you're gonna spend it, that appropriation needs to be reflected. In the appropriations report for either twenty twenty-five or twenty. Twenty-six, right? And we've already done the budget. So how does that get reflected in next year's appropriations report? So that we have the funds in the appropriations report to spend?
Well, uh, we, we should have all the money spent by the end of this year.
Twenty twenty-four. That solves the issue then, okay?
Yeah, we're planning on having, okay. The plan is to have this account at zero at the end of the year.
Okay, say no more. Okay.
That's why we do all these calculations, to try to get us to where we're gonna be at zero.
Not leaving any money untamed.
Perfect.
Uh, so with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve ARP grant fund, American Rescue Plan. Additional appropriation resolution ten dash twenty twenty-four.
You accept it?
This is George, I'll second.
Thank you, and now we'll do a roll call of those.
All right, and then with regards to additional appropriation resolution ten dash twenty twenty-four, Brent Slusser. Now, how do you say, year name?
Yay.
Uh, George Schenkel, what say you, year name?
Yay.
Molly Weber, what say you, year name?
Yay.
Bert Elliott, what say you, year name?
Yay.
And Dan's absence, please.
The motion carries. Thank you very much, Bert, Nathan, for your work on this. And now we'll move to. The twenty twenty-four CMG Lakeview Road project event.
Yeah, so, um, what you see, if you could scroll to it, um, thanks.
May.
Um, now you can see, uh, the invoice from API for the, uh, twenty twenty-four. Uh, Lakeview Road project, this is their first application payment that they're making. Uh, the original contract amount, as you can see there, is a little over a million dollars. The work complete is nine hundred and ninety thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one. And six cents. Uh, from that work completed, then there's a retainage of approximately forty-nine. Five thousand dollars and there's a net amount due of nine forty-one, three seventy-five and one cent. Um, the breakdown of the work is in the following pages. Um, this is a project, or you know, progress payment, so there is, as we all know, a few last minute details that need to be. Uh, finished before the project is complete, so that's what this retainage is for. In addition to those line items, and specifically, we're talking about things like sod, seeding, paint stripes, and those sort of things. Um, but the line share of the work, of course, has been completed. Um, and so I just opened this up to see if anyone has any questions on this. Obviously, this has been a real big, uh, complex project. Um, running a little bit behind, but, uh, there's no reason. That we see any reason why it won't be finished in the next week or two, so, um, that'll wrap it up.
No questions?
Okay. I'll wait till later. Okay, um, yeah, so with that, then, um, I would like to make a motion to approve pay application number one. For the Clear Lake twenty twenty-four, three improvements to API in the amount of nine hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars and one cent.
Brent, second vote.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, we have no unfinished business listed, so we will now, uh, move to. Surprising even myself. All right, we'll fix you, we'll, we'll get you all back in December, but, um, we'll start with the monthly reports, so. Turn it over to Nathan.
Uh, yeah, financial support are all on file. Um, I've begun. Preparing for end of the year. I've already started, uh, working on reports. And getting things like that ready for our annual, uh, annual financial report that is due at the end of February, so I've already started working on that. I've also been preparing for a, uh, audit. I don't know when it's coming, but I'm trying to prepare for one, so I'm prepared. That's always a good thing, um. And as far as everything else on my side, I think we're just waiting to pay this big payment. The API, um, and everything else is pretty much under control, so.
Thank you, Nathan. Any questions for Nathan? Hearing none, we'll turn it over to Chris for the Marshall's regular.
Uh, for the month of October, we worked a total of a hundred ninety-two and a half hours, drove nine hundred and eighty-one miles, and actually had three hours of, uh. Aquatic hours, that was getting the boat out of the lake and getting it ready for winter. Um, police department investigated nine cases, sheriff's office investigated five cases within town, eight cases within the township. We did have thirty traffic violations, um, majority of those were for. Violations within the construction zones, I think a couple people in this room know. Um, there were zero boat violations, one arrest, one, zero golf cart violations, two vehicle inspections, and zero golf cart inspections. Uh, we had four agency assists, two alarms, one property near trash, one unsecured premise, and one OWI within the town. Uh, sheriff's office within the town, we had two alarms, one welfare check, one suspicious, one fraud. And then in the township, there were property fractures, two welfare checks, and two. Hopefully, once the road project is done, we're gonna plan on increased enforcement out there. Once we get open that clip, so hopefully in the next week or two, we'll see how that.
Excellent. Thank you, Chris. Any questions for Chris?
A couple of questions. Uh, Chris, on the monthly hours reported, monthly hour of work in the aquatic.
Yep.
Uh, are those two, two separate, or is aquatic included in your? Top line monthly?
Yeah, aquatic is not included in the monthly.
So total hour would be those two combined?
Correct, so top one is for road patrol or bicycle patrol.
Mm-hmm.
And then the bottom, the aquatic is only dealing with something to do with on the lake, so just no patrol or dealing with the, in the boat, in the water, out of the water, or whatever.
Okay, and the, the OWI, can an OWI be alcohol or drugs, or is an OWI? When you guys reported alcohol only?
Could be either.
Either, okay. Just curious. Thanks.
Any other questions for Chris? Thanks a lot, Chris, appreciate it. Brent, you're up with the fire report.
All right. For the month of October, we had eight total incidents within the town in Clear Lake, including one mutual aid, with a region total of ten. We had one, uh, mutual aid, one liftoff assist, and six. Medical assist for the town of Clear Lake, and within Clear Lake Township, we had one electrical problem and one rubbish fire. Areas of concern or note is just comparing the figures to previous time periods, the town of Clear Lake, excluding mutual aids, increased by five compared to twenty twenty-three. Seven versus two. This was driven by an increase in medical assists. Uh, by four compared to twenty twenty-three, we went from, uh, six versus two. The Clear Lake Township calls excluding mutual aids increased by one compared to twenty twenty-three. Mutual aids for the region actually decreased by five compared to twenty twenty-three, one versus six. And the regional totals, including mutual aid, increased by one compared to twenty twenty-three, ten versus nine. Reports on file, if anybody has any questions.
That's it, yeah, it's a lot of medical assists.
Well, it's good that we have the resources to be able to.
Absolutely. Heard what's going on in La Grange, you're like, oh. Um, any questions for Brent now? Okay, we'll move forward. Um, could you do me a favor, Nathan, and just put, um, Robert's, the zoning, I was gonna, I need to. Robert and Tyler, Tyler hasn't quite started yet, but the zoning administrator report, so everybody in the audience can look at the report and see it. It will be on file if anybody wants to take a look at it. A piece of the things that Robert's been working on. During the transition phase. So I would just say, if you have any questions, you got it, Nathan.
Yeah, I just got, uh, just for reference, I just got his hours worked from the last period, and he worked thirteen point five. Just for future reference.
And what's it been, two, is that over two weeks? Two weeks, correct? Thank you, I think that's important.
But, uh, as far as calls and things like that, it feels like we're doing okay. It doesn't feel like we're getting overwhelmed. Uh, it feels like all the communication has been working, so I, I feel like everything's been flowing pretty good.
Excellent.
With its own.
Meeting, meeting residents' needs.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, Nathan, appreciate the additional color on this report. Um, we'll now turn it over to Guy.
I would, a total of two hundred and three hours last month, Bob worked a hundred and fifty-seven and a half. We had two road cut permits, two demo permits, four letters of non-objection. Um, in the sewer department, we had thirty-three locates, uh, three alarm calls, where we placed one grinder, repaired none, and set up none. We had twenty-five grinders on hand, um, seventeen of them are still boxed. One has been, is a remanufactured one, and we have three used ones right now. Average daily flow was thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-six gallons per day. Uh, we drove a total of three hundred and seventy-nine miles with the sewer truck this month. And on the street truck, we put five hundred and forty-three, and we picked up nine and a half loads of leaves.
And how many today?
We did four today. We have done fourteen since the back came back last Wednesday.
Great. Um, so I think, um, just generally, if you could provide, so the residents here can hear what you shared earlier about the leaf collection, what your plan is. As we move into the next couple of weeks.
We are rain, sleet, snow, it doesn't matter, that back is running every day to try and get caught up. Um, so. Hopefully, with any luck, by Thursday, we can, we can breathe. So we've made it almost, from the time we got the backpack, we've made it. To every portion of the lake at least once, so. Tomorrow, we stop just outside of Point Park, I'm on the other course of it today. Tomorrow, we hope to get the rest of east, Lakeview, or the, oh, the backlot side of east. Um, the north side of Lakeview, and the backlot side of west, and back out, and then turn around and come back the other way. So.
And then I know one of the things that we've discussed, um, previously, and I know you proposed a solution earlier, is the leaf collection at Clear Lake Cove. So if you wouldn't mind sharing, I think there's at least one resident, maybe even two, that would be very interested in hearing what the solution will be.
I have talked to a contractor that has a smaller back than we do. I'm waiting to get an estimate from them to pick up. Two separate times, and the other thought I had was the town providing the actual paper leaf bags. And the resident that lives on that street can come and get those. And then we'll just run down with the gator and pick them up, and then throw them in the dump truck. When we go to dump leaves, we'll dump them all at the same time. So.
Thank you very much, Guy. When do you think we could have some paper bags? And I know you're busy, is that something?
They said when you want to get them tomorrow. Yeah, when you want to go to town.
So, uh, let's move forward with that, so we're not in a holdup, and maybe we can have Jen send out a reach alert for, well. For the Clear Lake Cove residents. Specifically, so people know what's happening in Clear Lake Cove. I don't want bags all over the place.
No.
So let's figure out how we do, maybe we just.
I ought to send it to just the geographic region.
Okay, so let's do that. So we will, Nathan, if you could get the yard bags in. Abby, if you could spread that news with the neighbors, um, that would be great, and Guy, thank you very much for.
It would be greatly appreciated if somebody could call into the office and say, hey, we got a couple bags down here. Cause, you know, by the way, I don't have to drive down there every day to look at it, so, yeah, they just call.
Wonderful.
Probably the person at the very end, right?
Hmm, yeah, Woody?
Well, Woody would be okay, or, uh, Bo and Holly.
Yeah.
They're renters, but.
Yeah, they live in Woody's other house, right?
Yeah. Woody would be fine too.
Yeah. So.
Because I don't have to get down there.
Right.
Where I would do it.
Well, the other thing too, is maybe Chris and the deputies in their patrol, and if they see a fair amount too, just kind of keep an eye out. Um, Guy, thank you very much for coming up with the solution. I know this has been something that's been discussed, and we've all gotten questions and calls, so. Let's just move forward with that, since the yard bags don't. Cost a lot, and that we can start now, as opposed to waiting for another meeting and another bid.
Yeah, because a couple contractors I talked to were only willing to do it both twice a season.
Yeah.
They were doing it once in November and once in December.
No, this is great, this is great. Thank you very much. All right, um, any other questions for Guy?
No, just a comment. I thought the, uh, reach alert today was really good. Um, and I think, as you mentioned, people putting sticks and things, and as I run around, I see that.
The sticks are the least of our concern. We can see those.
Okay.
The rocks, the dog.
Yes.
Piles are the absolute worst.
So, anyway, I think that, that kind of communication is helpful.
Yeah.
Wonderful, thank you so much. All right, we'll now move on to council member reports, and I'm actually. Um, I'll start. Um, Bert and I had the opportunity to attend a hazard preparedness course. In Ashley last month, and I think both of our eyes were opened very wide. And so you'll be hearing more about some of the things that we need to do, maybe to prepare. For any hazard, whether it's an ice storm or a tornado or something at the school. So moving forward, we're gonna be working, you know, on some things around there, but it was, it was insightful. And we actually had to take a pre-test, which I kind of freaked out about. And then somebody said, well, pre-test or, you know, that's, it's just a base for your knowledge. I said, well, we'll go from there. So, um, I don't know if they're taking you in the admiral.
Well, the pre-test, I mean, it was multiple choice, so you could at least get a point or something.
Not where we lay our eyes.
No, but seriously, it was really good, and, and in a lot of ways, there are several relatively simple things we can do to be more prepared. Um, and, but you don't think about, you don't want to have to think about it in an emergency situation, so, um, yeah, more to come on that, it was really good.
Absolutely. Bert, do you have anything you want to share? George?
Uh, I'll just talk, uh, an HR point real quick, I think everybody knows that. Uh, Tyce, uh, Tyler is starting December twelfth. And, uh, prior to his, uh, uh, beginning, uh, I drafted a orientation plan for, uh. Tyler, the day he starts, and right now, uh, the president of the planning commission has it. Uh, we're collaborating on it, and as soon as, uh, we come to terms on like two of us, it should look like that we'll go up with the council members. For your review, I mean, but, but I, I think, uh, we just, we, we need to do something different with all of our employees. Uh, anybody that comes in here new, we can't just drop them in and let them go, I think we need to orient them, and it reduces their anxiety, it reduces our costs. It saves time, and it also gives us an opportunity to outline our expectations of what they can do, so that's, uh. Something that we're working on, and hopefully you'll see it next week.
Oh, wow, great, great. Thank you, George. Brent, any questions on your, no? Okay, so we will now, um, turn it over to general discussion, so let's start on Zoom, so I don't forget if. Bob and Vicky have anything that they want to ask or comment on?
Maybe you're gonna have them muted.
Hold on. Yes, we can hear you now.
Waiting for, I'm sorry, you were waiting for me?
Oh, no, we were waiting for Nathan, but now that you're unmuted, you're welcome to add any comments or questions, Bob.
I have no questions, I just, um, want to thank you guys for everything that you do for the town. And, uh, wish everyone to have a very happy Thanksgiving. I hope you're able to get together with family and friends.
Thank you, Bob, same to you and your family. All right, so we'll turn it over to the. I think, yep.
I have a question on the leaves. Is Clear Lake Cove the only place on the whole lake that has a problem?
No, we don't go down Billings Court, Sunset Bay, Savers Cove. Or Maple Street.
So what are you gonna do about those people?
Uh. Those have always, they've always brought them out to the end. Nobody's asked about those.
Are we?
Two of them at least are, I think, private, private drives.
Those are other than Maple Street, they're all private.
Private drives.
Yeah.
So we have no jurisdiction going down.
So are there people complaining from Clear Lake Cove?
Yes, yes.
Are there people complaining where the leaves are placed for Clear Lake Cove?
Not that I've.
Not, not that I've heard even.
Right.
It was, it was more what the several calls I received were more, um. That the leaf left back isn't going down there, so what are we supposed to do, and how can we get our leaves picked up? Without having to pay a land, a lawn company to do that. a land, a lawn company to do that, since the lake does do this, of the service.
Mm-hmm. But the leaf back has been broken anyways, so.
But prior to the leaf back being broken, that was a question, and regardless, the leaf back, we can't get it down there and back up, so we were working to find a solution, since Clear Lake Cove is one of the town roads, and it isn't a private entity.
Right. In the past, if somebody had leaves, we'd take the gator down the guy.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but that is, that's a pain in the butt. So we've been just trying to come up with a better solution, and the leaf, probably the leaf bags are gonna be best on, so.
Well, you'll probably get some complaints from that. I'm just saying.
Yeah, I mean, there's no making everybody happy, but in light of the fact that it is.
It's just, it's maybe too dangerous to back that back down that street, so.
Well, it's too bad they didn't take that little herb out at some point in somebody's life.
Yeah.
Not mine.
Well, maybe. Took out, right? Anybody else? Susie, Kathy?
What's the, um, Madison Road? Why, why are the barricades still there?
So, um, it still needs, uh, topsoil and sod as well as pavement markings. Uh, Gary reached out to me yesterday about getting barricades picked up, spiraling back to A P I. Um, at least getting moved off the edge to open the road up. Um, and they were gonna get through it as soon as they could.
When's it gonna be finished, though? I thought it was supposed to be finished the end of October.
Um, right now, uh, they haven't given me a date yet. They're waiting on uh, their sod and topsoil, so, as well as their striping, so. Um, basically because of the weather in the last week, it hasn't been conducive to doing that.
And Todd, what's the deadline? When does the project have to be completed? Cause we'll want to make sure that we do not miss that deadline.
Yeah, it was I'd have to look back with the inclusion, it was, I can't. So.
And then the road barricades will be moved off the road?
They'll have to be put back up when they're doing the work.
That's fine, but in the meantime.
But the road should be open to traffic.
Yes, especially if weather, with the weather changing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think it's, and if you could just stress with them that it's urgent to get it done now, not, not when they feel like it and when they can get to it. This is a important aspect with our weather changing.
Yeah, I do. It's gonna be, it's, the way I have stood it is either late today or first tomorrow.
Oh, that's, okay, thank you.
On the removal of the signs, or are you getting back out to complete the top work?
Move the sign.
Do barricade, there's awful sign, like completely off rhythm. So they, so there's indication. All complete, depending on weather, should be one of the things.
Then, right, up until.
Yeah.
Up until Thursday.
Yeah.
I know.
They also had a death, a family, one of them. There was a death in the family, which shut things down for a couple of days too, on what could be done, because not only were they shut down for oh, yeah.
Yeah, there's just a lot. Nothing really through at all.
And then, you know, their sons are busy trying to wrap everything up, so it's trying to get them all lined up to get that.
So now, Todd, my question is, obviously, because we got pushed further back, what is going to be their course of action? Should be sod and everything, not ink?
Uh, we, uh.
Or is that gonna be on the town again?
Uh, that should be covered under a warranty.
You know, check on us. This is the last time, I think, we ended up having to do a little bit of it ourselves. It was a similar situation where things that weren't necessarily in our control, or we, guys, we're the, the contractors to get out here and get it done, but do want to make sure we're protecting ourselves, so we don't have to foot that.
Thank you, Brent.
Susie, I just have a question. On that pretty black top, there are some, what appear to be horses' hooves. Little white things, and I don't know if it goes through, but is that going to affect the wear and tear on the asphalt itself? I haven't gone down the.
So I looked at those this morning.
Yeah.
That is from the drill techs on the horseshoes.
Yeah.
So if they don't put that on their shoes, it would like, be like you walking on ice. The, those horses have to have that on their shoes, or they cannot stand up on asphalt. Um, it does cause damage, but you can go up to like Camden Road. And it took ten years of everyday travel from the parish community outside of town to in town to see any noticeable damage, and they're running hundreds of buggies a day over that.
Okay.
We did ten buggies a week. It's, I mean, you're gonna see the white marks, but they go away. My sofa will make the same white marks when I close down this one. So.
I just was curious, because it's still pretty flat.
Nice and perfect, right?
And I, next meeting, I could have a horseshoe to show you what the drill techs is, a shoe with drill techs and one without.
No, I understand. I just, well, I like the visual.
So.
Any other questions, comments? Hey, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Yes, George, I move that we adjourn.
And a second?
Bert, I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carried. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. If you're traveling, safe. People, bring on your stuff. It's gonna be very different.